Mary Lou.
Alright, Mary Lou, come on back.
We're having quite the pink sunset out the window, probably because of all the smoke.
Oh yeah, probably. Oh yeah.
Oh wow.
Sun is orange.
I was just looking at my white cat and she's she's bathed in an eerie light.
Oh, that's so beautiful but weird. There we go.
So sorry.
Alright. Pamela, should we get started? Okay, alright. So... We don't have Melissa. We don't have Melissa anymore. We have Madeline. Yes, okay. So if we're ready to go, then I'll go ahead and start. Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. Thank you for everyone for attending tonight's virtual meeting. And thank you again to San Bruno city staff for helping us make the Zoom meeting possible tonight. To the members of our public again, we want to hear from you. If you are in the audience and you would like to address the commission during public comment or during a hearing item, but I don't think we have a hearing item, please use your raise your hand button in your Zoom tools. And when it's your turn to speak, the city clerk will call your name and unmute you. I think Madeline will unmute you. Okay. And you'll be given three minutes to address the commission. And if you're joining us by telephone, you can also address us. The way you do that is by pressing star nine. And Melissa will address you and unmute you. And again, you'll have three minutes. And then again, a quick note to my fellow commissioners, we're going to continue for our remote meetings to do roll call votes. So for any votes we'll be doing tonight, we'll continue with roll call. And and speaking of which, I think we're ready for a roll call, Pamela.
Of course. Let's do roll call tonight. Chair Lathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Biassadi.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
You have six members. You have a quorum. And Madam Chair, there's no public hearing item tonight, so you actually don't need any vote to close or open public hearing.
Right.
And we only have a study session, so there's no need to take a vote either.
Right, except I guess minutes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then we'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance and just to keep things simple, I'll just continue to lead in the pledge. Okay, whenever you're ready, Madeline.
Having technical difficulties, Chair, just one moment.
Okay.
Well, it's not coming up for me now.
Do it, Madeline.
Okay, thank you, Rucha.
Alright. Great, okay, here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you, guys. We'll go on to our business items. First is the approval of the minutes from July 21st, 2020, revised to reflect Commissioner Morgan's intenance.
Through the chair?
Yes.
That we approve the minutes of July 21st with the correction.
Alright.
I second that motion.
Wonderful. We'll go ahead and do, I guess, a roll call vote.
Chair Lathan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Biassadi.
Aye.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, and then item number two is public comment. And this is an opportunity for members of the public to speak about topics that are not on the agenda. Madeline, do we have any anybody raising their hand or in the waiting room?
No, we have no one in the waiting room at the moment.
Okay, okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on. You'll have your chance later if you want it. And then announcement of conflict of interest, there should be none. Okay, that's good. And then we can just move on to new business item A. And that's to receive the report and provide direction regarding the amendments to San Bruno Municipal Code Title 12, Article 3, Land Use and Zoning as part of a focus code update.
Thank you. I'll just get my screen set up in one moment. Alright. Alright, can everyone see my PowerPoint?
Yes.
Alright, great. So, good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Kelly Beggs and I'm a contract senior planner with Good City Company. I'm pleased to present the item before you tonight, which is a study session on the zoning code update, the next phase of it, which has a housing focus. So I'll start by just letting you know who's working on this initiative. Darcy Smith, Community and Economic Development Director, Pamela Wu, Planning and Housing Manager, myself, and then Aaron Acton, who as you all noted in the beginning of this call, is here and is principal of Good City Company. So the meeting objective for this evening is to receive an update and provide direction to staff regarding the draft zoning code ordinance. I'll start with the background and the history behind this update, move over to the new mixed-use zoning chapter overview, review affordable housing program requirements, and then just let you know which other miscellaneous updates we're working on right now, go over next steps, and then we can move on to discussion. So to start with the background. In March 2009, the general plan was adopted. And then in February 2013, the TCP was adopted. However, following the adoption of these two documents, there was no codification of the development standards in zoning districts that were present, especially in the TCP, in order to fold those into the zoning code. And that was for a variety of reasons. The recession was ending at that time. The pipeline explosion had happened. The city was really focused on rebuilding. Redevelopment had been dissolved. So there were a couple of different kind of greater influences working together to keep city priorities on other issues. I'll also just review that in November 2014, San Bruno voters did approve Measure N, which was, did implement part of the TCP by changing the height restrictions in the TCP area. And then in November of 2016, there was a downtown walking tour on issues related to the zoning code update that included city council members and members of the public to discuss issues that people were seeing downtown, as well as what kind of uses people wanted to envision there. And then lastly, in February of 2020, the parking chapter was updated by the city council and that was kind of the first step in this new series of code amendments that the city is undertaking. So for this phase of the zoning code ordinance update, the goals are to make sure that the code is consistent with state law where applicable. So that's especially in relationship to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units and state density bonus, all of which had new state regulations that went into effect this year. Next, we also aim to increase the amount of sites that are available for housing and strengthen the onsite affordable housing requirements to help the city meet its regional housing needs allocation. And then lastly, we'll also be clarifying some administrative procedures to help the city efficiently process applications. And then other important goals of this update include incorporating the general plan, the TCP, and the housing element into the zoning code. So I'll start with that overview of the new mixed-use zoning code chapter. So here you can see on the right, this may look familiar. This is a map of the TCP zoning districts or character areas. And a big part of the zoning code update will be to codify the TCP. So that will include development of new zoning districts in each of these like different colored areas that you see in the photograph on the right. New permitted uses in these areas, so permitting housing in all of these areas. And then new development standards that will really encourage high-quality design. So this table presents the permitted uses that are outlined in the TCP itself. So this table will really sets a foundation and provides guidance for staff as we move into like a more detailed permitted uses table. And that's something that we would like to see some feedback from the planning commission on, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. And then next, this actually relates to the general plan. So we're a little bit south of the TCP area on El Camino Real. And this new code update will also include a new zoning district for the general plan of multi-use residential focus land use classification. This area is, you can see in kind of orange and red hatch along Camino Real. And the area is currently zoned commercial or neighborhood commercial, neither of which permit housing. The new permitted uses that are outlined in the general plan are similarly kind of a foundational baseline. But those are multifamily and attached single-family housing, restaurants, personal and business services, hotels and motels, and a variety of offices. And retail would only be conditionally permitted in this district because the intention is to really concentrate for retail uses closer to the downtown. So this slide shows you kind of a little bit of a zoomed-out version of the existing zoning that's in this area of the city. And you can see a lot of this more like brownish-red that is along El Camino Real, and that is the commercial district. And also goes through this area, which is also part of the TCP. This red hatch is the current CBD. And then, as I mentioned, there's some neighborhood commercial zoning also around this part of El Camino Real. Then, this would be the new zoning districts. So it should look pretty similar to what you saw in the TCP illustration. This is a new station area. And then this would be the San Bruno Ave Huntington area. Here's the CBD, which is in much the same position as it is currently. And then there's an El Camino Real district, which is this kind of purplish color. The dark purple would actually be a civic center designation, and that's where City Hall and the Fire Department currently are. And then moving down south from Camino Real, this is that multi-use residential focus area from the general plan that we described earlier. So the key areas of discussion for tonight, as I described, the TCP does give us a baseline and foundation for which uses should be allowed. But it's not quite as detailed as what staff needs to be able to efficiently process and respond to business owners who are interested in opening businesses or developing new projects in the downtown, the TCP area. So staff in particular is interested in creating active pedestrian environment in the CBD. So part of what we're considering is allowing more active uses on the ground floor and permitting less active uses, like offices on the upper floors. So now I'll move on to the affordable housing discussion. So the court, the current ordinance does have some requirements for affordable housing. Those kick in at projects that are greater than five units. The rental projects do not have an onsite affordable housing requirement. They do have a fee that's required. There is an alternative that they can pursue to provide onsite affordable housing. That's not something that staff sees happening very often. And then for owner projects, these are the amounts that are required for low-income and moderate income for for onsite development. However, there's also an alternative to providing affordable housing onsite where the ownership projects can actually also fee out. And this is a bit unusual that the city sees this happening fairly frequently. As developers often find it to be more advantageous financially to apply for a fee rather than to provide the units onsite. So here are some of those alternatives that I discussed for the for-sale projects. They can pay residential impact fees. They can acquire rehabilitate affordable units, increase number of bedrooms, provide greater levels of affordability, construct second dwelling units, and then provide rental rather than for sale. Rental projects, as I discussed, these are the projects that are paying the fee. Instead of paying the fee, they can provide onsite units. And then for rental and for-sale projects, these alternatives are available to both of those. They can provide affordable units offsite, dedicate land, or purchase existing units for conversion to affordable units. So something different between San Bruno and other jurisdictions is that other jurisdictions really heavily rely on developers to develop this housing onsite that's available at the same time as the market rate units are available. So that's something that staff is interested in strengthening and also believe that it could assist the city in better meeting its RENA allocation. And that is actually shown on this slide. So as you can see, the city is not on pace for developing units for any of the income brackets that are listed here, including the above moderate income units. And many cities in the area do experience difficulty developing these very low-income units and the low-income units. But the kind of gap between San Bruno and other jurisdictions for moderate income and above moderate income is part of what we're trying to address with these zoning code updates. So these are, this is an idea of some of the proposed changes that could help to strengthen this. So we could, instead of like enabling developers to be able to pay a fee, requiring the onsite rental development of portable units upfront and making alternatives a bit more challenging to access for a payment of a fee could help to facilitate production of these units faster. And then you'll also notice on this slide that the rental units are kind of concentrated towards the very low-income and low-income brackets, while the ownership units are concentrated towards the moderate income brackets. And this is because oftentimes, ownership units are difficult to access for very low and low-income households. And that's just because of the fixed costs of homeownership. So it's often more beneficial to target the rental units towards those income brackets and then target the ownership to more moderate. Alright, so just moving on to the other code updates. So as I mentioned before, there's a, there are a few state laws that went into effect this year that will affect the accessory dwelling units chapter and the state density bonus chapter of the zoning code. So in terms of the ADU and junior ADUs, this new state law, their junior ADUs and ADUs have to be allowed in single-family zoning districts. There are further revisions and reductions to parking requirements for ADUs, allowance of ADUs in multifamily zoning districts, which is new. And then there are reductions to setback requirements for ADUs. And then for the state density bonus, there have been some changes to state law regarding 100% affordable housing developments that we'll be addressing in this code update. Lastly, I mentioned some more administrative updates to help the city to more efficiently process and review applications. We'll be adding a new chapter for general administration, just updating the condominium section. Also updating the architectural review permit section, and then updating the Chapter 12.128, which is the multiple time limit renewal revocation of architectural review permit, use permit, planned unit permit, or variance. And that especially, I think this commission has seen that the time limit clause of one year after approval has been challenging and that many projects have had to apply for extensions for that. So staff is proposing to extend that time limit from one year to two years. Alright, in terms of next steps, staff is going to finalize the proposed ordinance amendments. After getting direction tonight, there will be community communication and engagement on the issues. Planning commission will review the proposed amendments and make recommendations to city council. And then city council will hold a study session followed by a public hearing to introduce and take action on the amendments. So next, we'll move on to discussion from this commission on the issues. And just to kind of frame that out, the two objectives for tonight are really discussing what kind of active uses we want to see in the CBD, especially on the ground floor. And then secondly, discussing the onsite affordable unit requirements. So that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions and to facilitate discussion as needed.
Thank you, Kelly. That was a great presentation. So I'll invite our fellow commissioners to provide feedback and ask questions about the objectives on the table. Is there anybody who'd like to start?
Through the chair?
Yes.
So you had mentioned that the regarding the developers not being able to get through the permit process in a year. This year, obviously, it completely makes sense with COVID and all of that. We already saw, we just saw a project recently come through that needed an extension, which makes perfect sense. What other reasons are we seeing, you know, before COVID for projects not, for, you know, developers not being able to get things moving in 12 months after approval?
I think Pamela looks like she wants to answer this one.
Commissioner Hamilton, through the chair, if I may. That's a great question. So oftentimes, after the entitlement, the developer will have to go through a number of different application, additional application, final map, improvement plans, building permit, encroachment permit, demolition permit, you name it. And oftentimes, it's a very aggressive schedule trying to get all of the necessary permits within a year. If you were to get to have a final map recorded, the state actually allows two years for that exercise to be completed. So what we're proposing to do is align that entitlement stage with a map, possibly going to two years. And then also have the ability to have the developer coming back to planning commission or city council for additional time, if they wish. We've seen that during the recession. We've seen that during a hard time like this. So with the one year, it's putting a lot of burden on staff as well as the developer to keep coming back, asking for the same entitlement.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Is there any, has any study been done or proposed to perhaps happen in the future to look at our processes for all of that permitting? To see if there's anything we can do on our end to streamline it? Because I would imagine that having a, having a process that's known to be more streamlined and more efficient and, you know, quicker to get through would make San Bruno more more lucrative for folks to want to come here and develop, knowing that they can get things done a lot faster, because time is money.
That's kind of what we're doing right now. So it's part of the effort, what Kelly's great work is doing, is that if you look at our current zoning map right now, most of the CBD and also within TCP, the zoning district does not align with the TCP or the general plan. So we have to create, not create, but we have to ask the developer to comply with additional process to get to the entitlement. So with the zoning code update effort, we're hoping to streamline it so that it, so the zoning lines up with the general plan with the TCP. It will be a much more streamlined process.
Great. That's, that's great. I would hope too that we could look at other, at other areas. This is a wonderful first step and completely support it. There might, you know, there's other areas in the, in other parts of the permitting process where we can find efficiencies as well. This is, after this is concluded, that might be a good idea as well.
Well noted.
Explanation, thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Do we have to vote on extending the permit period from one year to two year?
Through the chair, if I may. That is not part of the objective that we're hoping to achieve tonight. We're hoping to focus your energy on the CBD, central business district allowable uses, and also requiring onsite affordable housing unit for new development. We have not fully finalized the zoning code update. To extend to one year to two year is in the scope, but we have not quite finished with the exact language yet.
Okay, thank you.
Through the, through the chair. Just, so I have two questions. One is, I think I am understanding that we are kind of reviewing this zoning code ordinance update and making a recommendation to the council essentially on the body of this as to whether, is that basically right?
Through the chair, not quite. So this is a study session to introduce you the scope that we're doing. So you will be getting another formal recommendation where the zoning ordinance is available. A draft ordinance is available for you to make a formal recommendation to city council.
Okay, okay. And then second, I mean, I went through the packet on Sunday night and I have fairly extensive notes which kind of fall into three buckets relative to this. One is about the objective. So I basically, I have some comments on the objective one and objective two topics, the uses and the affordable unit requirements. And then I have some that don't really fall into either, but I would be interested in discussing whether that's tonight or at another meeting. Like if we are going to have another opportunity on this, maybe that's okay. But I, just as a matter of process, do we want to sort of move on to comments specifically on objective one now and focus on that for a bit?
I think that sounds sensible. And if I've learned anything, it's that if you're allowed to talk about it, go do it sooner than later, because you may miss, may miss your chance. I, I, share with us your thoughts on objective one, and then maybe any of the commissioners who'd like to add to your bucket on objective one.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Excuse me for interrupting Commissioner Arrows. I just want to check with Pamela if there's an opportunity to address the definitions at all this evening.
Of course, that's definitely, yeah.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, so shall I start?
Yes.
Okay. So in the table of uses that was being defined, it kind of looked to me like we may have, I don't know if it's just like a sort of a printing error issue, but the way it was listed, it was saying that home daycare, for instance, was listed as permitted on the first floor, whereas it seemed like that, you know, if it's home daycare, it would be in a residential space, which would only be in the upper floors. And that basically seemed to go, basically everything that had the note one and note two. I think it was just swapped.
So I can respond to that really quickly. So you're right, that home daycare would be basically consistent with where residential uses are allowed. And residential uses are allowed on the ground floor and the CBD on streets that are not San Mateo Ave. So it's possible that that note was just swapped incorrectly, which I apologize for.
And I, I mean, I think if you go through and look at the note one and note two items, it's pretty consistently, it seems to be flipped. I mean, so personal services, like I would, I would expect if personal services is like a hair salon, that's listed as second floor, whereas you would think that would be street-facing. So I'm, yeah, anyway. Yeah, so I was a little puzzled with that. I suspect it was just that basically the two notes got mixed up. As long, as long as those are swapped, I think generally that that all made sense. I was surprised to see that we appeared to be excluding educational facilities, even from second floor and above in the central business. I don't, I don't really see any reason for that exclusion. I've actually taken classes myself in downtown Redwood City in upper-floor sort of office spaces through the UC Berkeley extension a decade or so ago. or so ago. Yeah, I just, I, there was that. And also in relation to educational facilities, we seem to be excluding vocational schools in the San Bruno Avenue Huntington area. And it seems to me that with the history of auto businesses there, you actually might want a vocational school focused on auto training in that area because to the extent that stuff is converting and some of those businesses shut down, we may have local tradesmen who are quite skilled who could be offering that training. And so I think we would not want to exclude that from that area. I have a few more items. I don't know if, I sort of want to give space for other people to comment if they disagree with me or I can keep going.
Keep going. Keep going. This is all good.
Okay. There was a category of social services and charitable institutions, which was excluded from some zones. Where was this? Yeah, they were excluded from the station area, from San Bruno Avenue Huntington, multi-use residential focus. And I was thinking, is that similar to like a senior center or that American, our American Legion Hall that we have? What, I wasn't clear why they were being excluded from some zones. And I guess, I don't know if you want to just note that down as a question and come back to it?
I'm noting it down. I mean, I think a lot of it has to do with the activation of this, of the street. So in terms of considering whether or not a social service or charitable institution would provide that, I mean, it would kind of depend on the institution, right? I have it down as permitted, as conditionally permitted in both the CBD and in El Camino Real. But we can definitely give some more consideration to, to the definition of it really and framing what kind of institution would be appropriate for other districts.
And I can see that. I mean, I can see where it's like, if you're thinking like something on the order of like a shelter, that might not be appropriate for that zone. You want it, you know, nearby, but not there versus something like an event focused space like the, you know, the hall.
Right. And the definition of that right now, I'll just let everyone know, is a facility that provides social services directly to persons in need and includes food banks, soup kitchens, crisis centers and other similar land uses.
Okay.
But we can definitely give some more thought as to where that would be appropriate and if that definition needs tweaking.
Okay. So moving on, I was just going to say, if, if check cashing establishments are the sort of classic payday lenders, have we considered just banning them entirely and trying to partner with a community bank or credit union to provide those services? Because that entire class of businesses is fairly predatory. And just like, as a, as a thing to consider, like, do we actually need them? Could we, could we help people who need, you know, I mean, people do need to have checks cashed, but it's possible to do that without stealing 10% of their money.
At least.
So they're only conditionally permitted within El Camino Real district. In the current, you know, this is just a draft and kind of a first, a first attempt at this. But we could definitely have some more conversations about that. I think that's well taken.
Okay. And I think that was all of my notes on topic one.
Okay. Do any other commissioners have notes that they'd like to add or questions they'd like to add regarding those topics?
Through the chair?
Yeah.
Well, I, I support a lot of the comments on Commissioner Harmon's. The one thing on the, on the check cash, it's interesting that they're only permitted to be on El Camino, but that's prime property, prime real estate, right? So it's interesting that they can only be there, but it's the best place because they'll get all the visibility. And so I, it's just difficult to, to support something that, that is, well, Commissioner Arrows says stealing their money. However, there are others, other ones as well. And I think there are other places that I, that come up, the gun place on El Camino, I mean, those kinds of things that come up. If there is a way to partner or do some things, it's certainly worth a discussion and expanding the thinking around it.
I agree with most of the comments from Commissioner Harmon. And I think some of the office spaces that they could be allowed for training sessions and, you know, tuition. Parts of the office space could be used for that dual purpose.
Thank you. Mary Lou, did you have anything else on your list?
Not on, on, not on the first section. I mean, I have, my comments are a lot on the definitions, but because a lot of the things have already been asked, it would only be redundant.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else? Commissioner Hamilton, did you have, you already shared, you already shared, didn't you?
I did.
Okay. I, I knew that Commissioner Harmon was going to roll up his sleeves and have some good ones. So I'm thankful and actually, and I do, I do agree with, with everything that you shared, that a lot of these topics should be explored. And I do like the idea of, and it's something I'm, I'm still learning about and understanding how it works. But I do like the idea of during these conversations, trying to further the, the good for, for folks via, via planning topics like the check cashing and being a little bit more flexible about providing maybe not conventional education, but, but finding opportunities for education in places you might not expect. So I think that's really great. And then maybe you want to dip into bucket two?
I was, I was just quickly round out that topic to say that, I mean, the vocational tech one struck me particularly just because of the existing history of San Drew Avenue, which I live, you know, a block and a half south of. And I mean, we certainly have our interactions with the auto businesses there. Everybody has their complaints that, oh, they park their customers' cars around on the street. But, you know, they're community members still and we don't want to, you know, sort of abolish that entirely. And so I did think that, that removing vocational training from that area seemed unfortunate specifically. And then on a broader topic, I just, I don't know how much people are aware of international ways of doing things. But if you compare zoning in the nation of Japan, the pattern tends to be that everything is permitted, but that which is forbidden. And in American zoning, everything is forbidden, but that which is permitted. And the joke, of course, is that in California, everything is forbidden, including that which is permitted. But, you know, I, I think we should be careful of that, you know, when we ban a use, I mean, coming back to permit it again, if we, if there's an exception is quite difficult. It takes, it takes a lot of effort. And so I would like to avoid ruling out activities unless we're really, really sure.
Yeah. I'm, I'm guessing, just jumping in on your thinking, I'm guessing that part of the reason for the permitting or of different purposes is probably to encourage more housing kind of at the forefront, it sounds like, of a lot of, a lot of these areas. And also not trying to nudge or manipulate things a little bit more to, to be what, it sounds like most people would, would prefer. However, things do change. And I guess we also have to consider building a certain amount of flexibility into, into the code. So I think that's, that's really valuable.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
My last thought here is, you know, as we plan to develop for a robust community, and that's really the goal, robust and engaging and involved, how are, maybe it's a question for Kelly, is Kelly, Kelly bags, not you Kelly, but parking, you know, that's the parking piece that, how does that come into play with all the components?
So you may find some of these definitions that you see in this attachment to be familiar because they're actually identical to the definitions in the parking chapter that council adopted in February. And those standards are already in effect. So this will kind of be an act to, to that amendment.
Thank you.
And I'll also just note that, so this does apply to the TCP area. You know, there are, there are pretty conservative parking standards for residential uses, but there is the option for TDM and Lufthansa in these areas for the parking chapter.
Thank you.
Chair, I did think of one more question in this topic, in this area before we move on to the next one. But I don't want to interrupt the current flow. Just don't want to go to the next one yet.
Okay. Well, I think now's your time, Commissioner Hamilton.
So one, one area that I think is, is we're going to see a lot more interest in just because of the changes that have happened in our society because of COVID and just in the sheer difficulty that restaurants have to stay open with costs is ghost kitchens. And I think that's, you know, commercial kitchens where you, you, a, a business owner makes food, has an online presence, it's all delivery only, no, no rest, no, no tables, no seating, no parking required. Just because it's just so, it's so difficult to maintain all of that real estate. And I'm just wondering, looking at all the categories, where one of those would fit into the categories, just to make sure that we're not overlooking that. And, you know, if it fits into one of the categories, great. But if we're, if it doesn't, if something like that doesn't fit into any of those categories, I would want to make sure that we would be able to encourage those types of businesses in San Bruno.
That's a very good point. I mean, my first instinct would be to classify it as a restaurant. And as you may recall from the parking chapter, the parking requirements for a restaurant are actually based on public floor area. So if there is none, it's possible that there would be very limited floor area that's required. But we can definitely try to work on the definitions to see how that.
Hi, through the chair. So I really appreciate Tom bringing this up. It's, it's a great thought. I mean, I would hope that we're not going to be in plague world forever, that this will be something that passes sort of by the time this is likely to be all adopted and, and super relevant. But on the other hand, I mean, we don't know that and, and things may happen again. So I wonder if, because I think in the long run, you know, in sort of normal situation, you would want the businesses, like particularly in the central business district, to be ones that are engaging, that people, you know, are sitting, you know. But it, but I wonder if what we actually want to do is to create flexibility in that definition of what a restaurant is, to allow the restaurant to simply, you know, do more food prep in the space that normally would be public space. And if this really is, I mean, this seems like it has to be a category change, like a redefinition of our business categories, that it's not a question of which business categories are permitted.
And through the chair, if I could add something?
Yes.
You know, I, I would say I agree in to Commissioner Harmon's point, a lot of times you might want to see, you know, you might want a more active use in the front of the building so that you do have that pedestrian activity. And you could have a ghost type kitchen in the back of the building where they're just preparing meals and then delivering, you know, out back. So there are creative ways. And that also gives, you know, new business owners that don't, won't have to pay as much per square foot for a large building to be able to have newer businesses that are able to come up that way. Exactly.
And through the chair?
I just want to make sure that I, I was clear. I was absolutely not advocating replacing restaurants with ghost kitchens. Even before COVID, you know, 80% of new restaurants fail. It has nothing to do with COVID. And it has to do with just the, the cost of real estate and maintaining all of that, making, maintaining all of that real estate, all the parking requirements, all that stuff. I, I would much rather see restaurants and foot traffic and vibrant, vibrant foot traffic in and out and all of that. But I also want to keep our options open for, for our businesses.
Through the chair?
Yes.
You expanded, Tom expanded my thinking on this. We had a San Bruno resident that, that was a caterer. And, and his business was in Redwood City. And he actually leased his kitchen out. He, he delivered certain days and he leased his kitchen out. So he had other people who could lease space to use that. And so is that some of the things you're thinking about as well?
Yeah, it would be a business designed to do just that. It would be, so, you know, it would be a large commercial kitchen that more than one, more than one.
Entrepreneur.
Entrepreneur, exactly. Would be able to utilize whether they schedule it or work side by side or separate it or whatever, and be able to share that space for food prep. And but it's for, it's for delivery only. And who knows, maybe there could be a, you know, walk up for takeout or something to.
This particular business, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
This particular business also provided demonstrations, like a cooking class or an event night and invited, they called it, and so there were different ways of introducing the community to that business. And then he would then market all the other businesses that were there and had samples. And of course, the catering was the main thing. So it was a really interesting, productive and professional process. I was, I was really appreciative of. I'm glad you raised that question.
Thanks, Mary Lou. And, and to jump in, in the ghost kitchen concept, I know that Atlas Pizza has had a challenge with the square footage of their building. And I know that that kind of met up with the parking requirements. And I don't know how the chips fell for them, but a situation like a ghost kitchen or kind of an alternative use in splitting their business, that could be something useful for them. And so maybe just under the, using them as a little bit of a guinea pig in your thinking, consider how, how we could be creative and, and help existing and potential businesses be able to divide their spaces.
I did want to bounce back and kind of respond to something that Mr. Agnan had said a moment ago about. I mean, I absolutely, and obviously as Tom expressed, and as I previously expressed, like, we all want that active use with customers being able to come in and sit in the front of the restaurant, you know, front of house, as they say. I mean, I guess my, my point though was that, I mean, we are facing potentially another six months, potentially a year, in which the space in restaurants that normally would serve customers is drastically devalued. That at best, they're going to be able to see half as many people, at which point the costs of having the staff to serve them doesn't make sense. You can't operate a restaurant at half capacity. Just, you know, like the, you have to be operating at 75, 80% seating. And so what I'm, what I'm looking to do is say, like, can we simply redefine the category of restaurants such that if your restaurant can't use its public seating for the intended purpose, that there are other purposes that, that, that can be happening in that space? I think some restaurants have been having some success with essentially selling groceries out of that space. And some of the ones that have pioneered that have then faced blowback from their cities where the city's like, well, you're not zoned for that. Or you're not, you know, that's not your category of business. And I, my understa, I have read some stories in San Francisco and LA of that. And I think largely the authorities backed off. But, but I wonder if we could give certainty to these businesses just by, by sort of changing the category of what a restaurant means to allow for these more flexible uses. Because, you know, I mean, it's, it's COVID-19 in 2019, 2021, and maybe in 2030, it's an influenza or something, right? So like, this may happen again. And, and if we could provide more flexibility to our, our business owners, I feel like that could be useful. It is a little, we are, I think, stretching a little beyond the scope of this discussion. But as a, as a long-term goal, I think, looking at broadening the definition of, of the business and, and being, writing our code more towards unless it's explicitly forbidden, we're cool with it, could be valuable.
Yes.
As, as my colleagues express more of their thinking, more ideas come to my head or more thoughts. And I'm noticing because of the restrictions of being able to dine inside, there is creativity about dining outside. And I wanted to just basically ask the question, there was a time when Don Pico came before the commission wanting to extend their outside dining and it was denied. And so I don't know if these are coming before the city for permits or whatever, or survival. And I'm not at all opposed, but I want to be sure that we at least not, someone come up with, some official comes up and says, you're not, you know, you're not within the means of this. You need to. some official comes up and says, you're not, you know, you're not within the means of, of this, you need to break down. And there was a situation in San Francisco, they were doing these, uh, um, plastic pods and they had to remove them because ventilation or something. And so I'm, and as Commissioner Hamilton said, we're beyond the scope of this discussion, but it doesn't have to be answered now, but it certainly, I believe it needs at least be taken back to discussion with staff or committee level of some sort to look at when we are in a crisis situation, we are supporting and allowing certain things to happen. And, and so is there a time limit or not? Is this okay forever or not? You know, and, um, there's all types of things. If you look at Community Corner, who's doing a really amazing job, uh, Celia's try, you know, they're just restaurants really making huge efforts. J.C. Booners, I saw the side of their area, which had zero parking, but they used that one section on the side of the building to create a really lovely dining area. And they're, they're stretching themselves to survive. And each one is just really expressing the difficulties, you know, the owners of. We're doing, Rogers doing a hometown Tuesday and we're frequent, be going to restaurants. They're telling us, he's saying, so I'm thinking, okay, I don't want some official situation to come in place and say, sorry. So at least if we can, there could be some opportunity for discussion. And I'm not trying to resolve it tonight, but at least put it on the table.
Through the chair, I'm wondering if we could tie, you know, the permission for restaurants to operate with a provision of wide pavement, you know, to tie the two together. So there's always room outside for dining. You know what I mean? Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, uh, you know, often a restaurant, the situation is situated where there's a very narrow pavement outside. So there's no room to have outside dining. But if we could tie, uh, the location of restaurants to where there is wide paving, you know, to provide outside seating, might be an idea or something to look at.
Well, just, there, so there is, um, there are new step back requirements for new developments and there are requirements for, um, public, um, public seating and public facing items in those setbacks. But in terms of the existing restaurants that are operating that, um, won't necessarily turn over in that way and become like a ground floor of a new residential building or something like that, I think they're kind of stuck in their existing condition. But there is room for new developments to have that kind of outdoor seating potential built in.
Yeah, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, and the one thing I'll add, I think one of the, one of the upsides of what we've gone through over the last five months is people are more open in general about using the right of way in different ways to support things like restaurant space. And I think as that normalizes more and more, not just in San Bruno, but everywhere, you'll see more expansion of uses that were, used to be outdoor, going into the outdoor, uh, indoor, into the outdoor space, like sidewalks and, and parking areas.
Through the chair, if I may?
Yes.
So Aaron, on, to, to layer on top of that, the, um, CBD, the Central Business District, where we're trying to encourage, uh, street-facing businesses, restaurants and whatnot. What can we do in what we're talking about right now to include those things like they do in San Francisco and Burlingame, like parklets, where you could take a parking space or two and make it seating for a restaurant? I, I think that would go a long way into bringing that experience, uh, into the downtown environment. So I, I think if we can look at something like that in our planning too. Is there anything that you have for that?
Yeah, I mean, I think a key thing, I mean, a lot of this is public works driven. So, you know, you, you figure out what your encroachment permit process is. You try to, to, with some of the other commissioners we're talking about, you try to standardize that much to create certainty so they're allowed to do it. From a zoning standpoint, it's usually pretty easy things, like saying outdoor seating does not count towards the parking requirement overall, only indoor seating does. Or you're allowed to take up that parking space, uh, you know, and that's not, you, you recognize that that's one parking space taken out of your whole downtown area. But you have a lot of part, you know, you have a lot of other places that you could park in your downtown area that will, that will make up for it, you know, through different parking management strategies. So that, that's probably on the zoning side. But a lot of it is just really working out your public works rules, how you encroach in the right of way and what's generally accepted for those type of uses in the right of way. There's a lot of smaller effects you have to look at, like stormwater effects and things like that. But other cities have done that and it's something that I believe San Bruno could do as well.
And through the chair?
Yeah.
I would like to also, we're talking about restaurants, but there are other businesses also that want to extend outside of the, outside of their, um, they have the limitation to be inside. And I want to elaborate into what types, but they're, I don't want to limit it to just restaurants, but to be creatively thinking about other types of businesses that can or cannot be outside.
And, and there are shorter term things you could do. You know, I know that there's a couple of cities in the peninsula that just last night approved standards for, uh, salons to move outside into their right of way during the pandemic. So there's things that you could do long-term to encourage it. And there's more, uh, immediate actions that you may be able to take to support those type of businesses that are kind of outside the zoning code. They're more things that you do at a council well, level to encourage those on a short-term basis.
You wouldn't want a vaping shop outside.
Yeah, I know. State probably won't allow that either.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments? And I, I feel like I'm using your, your buckets, Commissioner Harmon, as a, as a little bit of an outline. But maybe we're ready for your next round.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to start again if, if nobody else is eager.
I'd say go for it.
Okay. All right, so in the, in the topic of the affordable housing updates, I, I wondered, I mean, have, have staff been conversing with any of the regional nonprofit developers like Mid Peninsula or Bridge Housing to, to, uh, so I know Bridge Housing is, is heavily involved in the 50% affordable Balboa Reservoir Project, which has had some approvals up in San Francisco recently. I believe they were involved with the affordable units for, um, I think it's Passages, which was approved by the San Mateo City Council last night.
That's right.
Um, you know, I mean, like, they, these seem like people who would be able to, to help inform, like, what helps them produce the very low-income units that we are obviously woefully short on. So I'm just saying, have, have they been included in our conversations?
I could chime in a little bit through the chair. We have been in contact with these developers, um, which is a little bit beyond, um, the objective tonight. So if you remember Kelly's presentation, point out that we have an existing affordable housing requirement, 15%. Most of the projects so far have, um, not provided onsite units. So we actually have affordable housing fund about a little shy from $4 million. So we're working on getting RFP out to ask consultants to help us spend the money. Or do we, do we partner up with a nonprofit organization to administer our own units? Do we want to start construction? I mean, if we do want to start construction, Bridge Housing, Peninsula Housing, there's a lot of good developers out there. But with $4 million, um, there's really very little that you can do. So those are kind of options that we're contemplating for the time being. What we're asking is maybe we want to strengthen the affordable housing requirement for at least the rental units, to have these to build onsite. So if you were to look at our webpage dedicated for affordable housing index fee, the impact fee, the fee is not equitable to actually providing a unit onsite. So a lot of developers have opt out to, uh, fee out. So, so to kind of long answer, to answer your quick question is yes, we have been in communication with a lot of developers. But the real question is, there's not much we can do at this point with less than $4 million.
Yeah, I, if I could just add one thing to that, add to Pamela's point, kind of there's the two buckets. You have your inclusionary housing bucket, that's what we're looking at today is how do you include a percentage of every market rate development to be affordable? The great thing about that is it comes online right away. You don't have to wait to get the cash, buy the land, partner with a nonprofit and then bring it on. Now, the flip side to that is there is a lot of upside to having those 100% affordable projects. Because a lot of times you could group people together and then provide services, services to them in that same building. Really, the big barriers to that are A, land, trying to get land, and then B, just subsidy, both at the local level and then usually at the federal tax credit level. And unfortunately, about 30 to 40% of the money that used to be available in federal tax credits are no longer there because of the corporate tax cuts that have happened during this administration. People just don't need to use those tax credits anymore. So what can we do from a zoning standpoint? A lot of it relates to density and the density allowances for, uh, affordable housing developers. There's a state law that passed, uh, 1763, that allows essentially unlimited density within the form of a building, uh, for 100% affordable housing developments within a certain radius of transit. And I think our transit corridor area is well set up for that. So I think we will be able to see some, San Bruno will be able to see some traction there because of the way the transit corridor plan is set up to incentivize 100% affordable housing in those areas.
I do want to observe on the 100% affordable projects. I mean, obviously, for people that need, you know, social services or for seniors, there's, there's obviously like, you know, great value and sort of concentration. I, I do think there is also merit to economic diversity, that, that, you know, the sort of, uh, the lawyers and the software engineers living next door to the baristas and the, you know, right, that like, there's, there, that social mixing has a, a value as well.
No, absolutely. I think there's trade-offs with both. And then e, even in particular, when you do have that 100% affordable housing developed, make sure it's part of a mixed income community overall, so that when people are, you know, it's, it's not concentrated in that way overall from a neighborhood standpoint.
And I have, I have a question on this, um, the in lieu of fee. Is, 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 how can I say this? Is this a time where we're considering the actual cost of the fee? Is this a time where we would actually increase the rate of the fee to a point where it would be more useful and would accumulate so that it would be more realistic, more quickly to, uh, to build, uh, some of these, uh, units ourselves? And at what point does it become such a burden that nobody would want to develop here? And is this, are we talking about this now or is this a whole different topic?
Yes and no. So the, the fees are assessed through a NEXA study. So the fee, the current fee has been established since, looking at my notes, about 2018. So it needs to be re-indexed every so often. So we're not quite there yet. But at the same time, our current inclusionary ordinance says that you could provide onsite or do, um, fee out. So what we're asking is to straighten that requirement to do, to require you to do onsite unless you have provided a substantial reasoning for council to consider an alternative to fee out. And then the next step can be that we prepare another NEXA study to look at the real cause for these impact fee and realign it and update that. So it's kind of a two-prong approach.
Yeah, because it sounds like you don't, it sounds like both are valuable. I mean, having, fees is valuable, but it's, it's about striking the right balance.
Right, right.
And if, if we make fee too low and too easy, you know, they're going to go that way. But we don't, we also don't want to discourage development on the other.
Right, and we're also proposing a little bit more detail to what sort of affordability that the developer should propose. Right now, Kelly correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're asking 9% for low and very low and 6% for moderate. So with the zoning ordinance amendment, we're proposing, um, 10% of low and very low or 5% moderate, something along that line to be provided onsite for rentals. For a single-family housing, housing, they're slightly different. And then also for, um, owner occupied. So that's the, that's the current requirement. For any time that you're developing more than five units, you would have to do 6% of very low and 9% of, um, moderate. And that's the same for rental and owner occupied. And what we're proposing is to do 5 to 10% very low, nothing in the moderate bucket, still come up with the 15 altogether. So it's up to the developer to do 5 very low, 10 very low, but you got to have 10, uh, 15 altogether. And then, uh, moderate for owner occupied units. And reason being is that when you have a rental development, this is where the deeper availability can come in.
Okay, um, and just to, to touch on the, the no moderate. If, if I'm not mistaken, going back to the, the table where you showed how much we've actually been providing for arena scores, if I'm not mistaken, I think that we had zero, what was the moderate? The moderate was actually fairly low as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Moderate, um, you provided 47 out of 205 units, so it's about 23% complete.
And our, and our arena cycle is more than half over.
Correct.
And just out of curiosity, the above moderate income units, I just assume that that, that wouldn't be regulated by anybody? That would just be market rate, is that right? Is that just because we're basically not providing any housing?
So some jurisdictions do still like deed restrict those units to a certain percentage of AMI. So there can be a deed restriction, but you're right that, you know, it's, it definitely is for people making more than 120% of, um, area median income.
I, that's interesting. It just, it's strange to me that that would be something, it would be monitored.
Measured.
Yeah.
I think it's, I mean, Pamela might be, or Aaron might be able to, um, comment on why that is monitored a little bit more.
I, I think, you know, the state's overall policy goal is that a lot of the housing, like, you have to have a supply side in order to make the overall housing market work. And so I think that's where it's getting at, the above moderate. That, that, you're right, those are mostly, 99 out of 100 of those are market rate units overall. There may be some deed restrictions to allow up to 150% AMI, but in general, the, your market rate developments. At the same time, I, you know, state policy recognizes we're in a deep hole right now and there's a lot of folks that need affordable housing at the, uh, below market rate. So then you have those other goals as well. But the moderate, low and very low usually requires some type of subsidy or some type of development incentive, while the above moderates do not.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Harmon.
Sorry, was somebody else asking? Like, okay, I can go ahead. Yeah, I mean, you're, what, uh, what Cheryl Athan just brought up was kind of half of what was going to be my next question, which was basically like, I mean, rather than just requiring this, could we look at raising fees to get this balance right? And so it sounds like that's been adequately answered. The other half of my question there was, um, what happens with sort of fractional units? I mean, so if you have an eight-unit building, you can't have like 10% of an, you know, right, there'd be 0.8 units. It's like, do we collect essentially like 80% of the in lieu fee in that case? And right, so you just like, you don't produce the unit, or if it's a five-unit building, right? Where 15% of five is even less than one. Do we, do we collect the in lieu fee on that fractional unit?
I think that's a policy choice of either collecting, yes, I think a lot of jurisdictions do collect, um, collect the fractional, um, and, and in lieu fee, um, or you could provide for rounding.
Yeah, there actually, we do have a rounding provision in the current, um, affordable housing program. So depending on where a map lands, um, it tells you either to run it up or run it down.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I feel like, I mean, certainly, you know, I mean, if we, if we would like to see some sort of missing middle housing, where you have sort of small apartments, small plexes, you know, if you sort of like do a, do a project that's like sort of a pair of triplexy structures where it's six, it's a six-unit project, like, I, I feel like giving people the opportunity to, to build those. I don't know, I, I think that, I, I think I would favor allowing sort of a fractional in lieu, although we might need to look at raising what the in lieu value is, it sounds like. And then I, uh, I was looking at Mountain View's calculations for how they do it where, because I mean, it looks like what we are proposing right now is just, it's like, you just have like a sliding scale where it's like 5 to 10% of VLI and 10, yeah, right? Like, I, I thought that the approach they were taking, I mean, and I think I'm following the math right, that, right, they're using the 30% extreme low, 50% very low, 80% low. And then, um, I was unclear if, if 120 is what they're using for moderate as the top of the range. I was unclear if, if a hundred and twenty is what they're using for moderate as the top of the range? Or whether they were counting moderate as a hundred, but, uh,
It's generally accurate. It depends on the county, but.
But yeah, and then they were taking a weighted average and saying like, okay, like you, you must offer at least two levels and you must hit this average and then you can sort of smear it across all of them. And I, I thought that was an interesting, flexible approach. I mean, I feel like if we do this sort of five to ten thing just in the very low, that like, they're basically just always gonna do five and ten of the next, like, because the, I mean, the developers pretty consistently, you know, the, the lower you go, the bigger the subsidy that unit needs.
Right, and just to clarify, I think what staff is proposing, um, here is just, I, I would like to see more clarity and not a range actually developed here. Um, it just is a question of, you know, that the benefit of having more very low income, um, housing units is very big, but it's also a greater burden to developers. Um, so if we want to lower that at five and then keep this at ten, but I would definitely recommend clarity in these.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess what I'm interested in is looking at like, you know, saying like, you can put units in any of the categories, extreme, very, low, moderate. Um, but you do have to hit a certain average number, which means that, right, if you, if you move one up to moderate, you're probably gonna have to move one down from low to very low and that, that, um, I, I thought that model that Mountain View, I mean, obviously, it would be interesting to know how successful Mountain View is being with that model, how long they've been doing that. But I, I thought sort of that, conceptually, it seemed like a, uh, an interesting framework that we might want to consider.
Yeah, I think that's actually a pretty good best practice overall, is that you allow some flexibility, but at the city's discretion. Um, I've seen that, I, I worked on another ordinance in Revit City where we had a similar, uh, out and it would have basically said, you could, the, the ranges may change at the council's discretion, but it, it results in the same financial burden to the development. So there could be a time within our arena cycle where we need more extremely low units and we don't need moderate units. So we might say, it's okay, but more extremely low, um, and your averages might be different, but the same financial subsidy to affordable housing is given. So I agree, there should, we should have something that allows some flexibility to, to be achieved overall.
Is there a way for us to, I mean, like, it, like, so what, what, what Mountain View's model is doing is their, their, their metric, the thing that they're averaging across is this percent of AMI. Is there any way for us to, with reasonable confidence, over the course of two or three years, to, to say what we think the subsidy is? Because then we could directly target the metric of, we must, you know, like, we're going to allocate a certain amount of subsidy to this and you can choose whether that's more moderate units or subsidizing, right?
It would be pretty difficult because there's two kind of variables that are out of our, out of our control. It's what area median income is and that's adjusted, but not a lot. And then what the difference is between the affordable unit and the market rate unit, which could fluctuate pretty wildly. Um, but I think we could look into this more when, when we bring it back and have, you know, different options of, and understand what the upside and downside are of those options.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, the AMI, the what Mountain View is doing is a heck of a lot easier. Um, but it does seem like if we could, I mean, you, because you obviously would not want to have to adjust it like on the fly, month to month, that would be really bad. Um, but if you could, if you could, with reasonable confidence at the scale that these projects work on, um, that, that actually seems like that would be sort of the ideal metric to target, but, um, okay, uh, yeah, and that's, that's my notes on this topic. I do have a couple notes that are kind of outside of this if we want to discuss, uh, after, um, but, but I will see the floor.
Let's pause there. I think that, uh, Commissioner Hamilton, uh, had a response.
Yeah, well, I have a, I have a question. This is, um, off of, uh, one of Commissioner Harmon's, um, comments, which is very, very apt and very correct that, you know, when you've got the different buckets, the, the lowest, the lowest buckets get the less, at least amount of attention, especially if you have a, if you give them the option. Um, because they require the most subsidy. When we look at the, um, in the appendix, the, uh, the comparison of all of the neighboring cities and what their, what their, um, requirements are, you can see that San Carlos kind of flipped it on its head and is requiring fifteen percent total, but it's ten percent very low and five percent low. Yeah, yeah, this one here. Do we know, did that discourage development? Did that, you know, do, do, do we, have we talked to anybody in San Carlos to find out if, how that's working? I mean, I, I would imagine they did that because they're looking at, they're probably looking at similar numbers to ours, seeing that there's nothing very low happening. So, you know, and trying to encourage it, but, um, or, or trying to, you know, kind of force it to happen. But do we know if, if that had any kind of adverse effect? Or that, or how long is that to be in place?
Yeah, so that, that was adopted relatively within the last year, so I don't think we would have a chance to see what the unintended consequences or intended consequences of, of that are. Um, the other thing that I forgot to mention, the third variable is the state density bonus law. And that allows additional density above the base that the city offers and allows some concession that is tied usually to deeper affordability. So there is somewhat of an offset if they provide extremely low and, and very low, that they're already getting through the state, that might encourage them. So that's why you actually see a lot of developers, uh, propose at the low and very low, both for density bonus reasons, but, uh, some that are doing tax credit projects, twenty percent tax credit projects, also do it for the same reason.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners or should we let, um, Commissioner Harmon get on with this grab bag? All right, grab bag time. Where do we go?
Sorry, I stopped sharing my screen. Can you see everybody now?
Yes.
Commissioner Harmon, here we go.
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, it's just up to you and they're both, um, probably things that, I mean, maybe other people want to respond to, but they're things that I think maybe sort of get thrown into the agenda of a future meeting. One is we brought up, there was the ADU and JADU ordinances, um, which I'm a little bit familiar with myself because I'm planning to at some point build an ADU in my yard, and so I've been paying attention to that. Um, uh, we've had discussions in the past about, uh, the restrictions on building ADUs or new residential floor space in the, I believe it's the seventy or seventy-five decibel noise contour. That that seems to be just outright forbidden because of some relationship we have with the airport district. Um, and I would like to, at some point, have a real conversation about what we could do to change that, to allow our neighbors that are inside those noise contours to, to be able to take advantage of, uh, the opportunity to, you know, house a, house an aging parent or, or, you know, whatever they want to do with that, uh, space. Um, and if that means that we require some sort of negotiation with the airport where we say like, we promise that anybody that does this as, you know, when they get their conditional use permits from the city, that there will be a condition that says you're not gonna sue the airport over the noise because you know about it, and that's fine. Um, but this kind of goes back to the, um, you know, let people do more of what they want with their own property. Um, and, uh, I, I mean, I have sort of wondered in understanding that like, oh, we have these rules against building there. I've, I've wondered if we are possibly violating state law on these new ADU and JADU, ADU rules if we're forbidding it, um, which would not be great.
Yeah, so I think just the status on the ADU and, um, JADU ordinance is that it's been drafted, but we're still working with council um, to just clarify those fine points of state law and to determine the amount of discretion the city has. And as you know, state laws progressively remove discretion from the city, from being allowed, be allowed to regulate and prohibit ADUs. Um, so that's kind of still a work in progress and that's definitely something that we'll be investigating in terms of the airport noise contours.
Yeah, yeah, the one thing I'll add to that, it was kind of an interesting situation where San Bruno and other airport adjacent cities were caught in conflicting federal and state laws. So on one hand, you have the FAA laws that don't allow new residential units to be built within the seventy to seventy-five decibel con, noise contours. On the other hand, you have state law that says you're, you know, you're allowed by right to have these ADUs. And I think, to Kelly's point, over time, I think people have recognized that state law should take precedent when it relates to this. But this is something we just have to research because there's not much precedent to look into it, but I think it's definitely trending in that direction.
And I, I definitely, obviously, you need time for your research, but I would appreciate it when we, when we do brief the ADU law, the ordinance, I would, I would really like that to be included. Um, and then my, my other remark was, um, do we need to and do we want to nail down Civic Center as its own zone? Um, I mean, I know, uh, a, a number of us probably know, um, local activist Jeffrey Tong, who's advocated for a couple possible ideas about moving the Civic Center and Library. But I think, um, just in general, I think we should certainly be open to letting that, you know, prime real estate along, uh, El Camino be, be developed into whatever else we might want on El Camino and, um, and perhaps moving the Civic Center closer to the, the Transit Center, which, I mean, depending on, you know, I mean, you could, you know, you could, you can fund the purchase of one plot of land with the sale of another, right? So, um, yeah, I just, I was, I was somewhat skeptical of nailing down Civic Center as its own zone, where it's like, say, oh, this is only for civic uses here. This can never be redeveloped into the other same things that we have for the rest of the El Camino zone, as opposed to just saying, this is all the El Camino zone and, yeah, we're allowed to have a Civic Center here. But, you know, if we decide we want to sell the building, we don't have to now pass a separate zoning ordinance.
So the TCP does, um, in the permitted use table, which maybe I'll, um, bring back. I hope I'm not making everyone dizzy with sharing my screen and stopping sharing my screen. Um, hopefully you guys can all see this now. It does, uh, lay out the Civic Center designation. Just give me one second. There we go. Um, and it, it does limit the uses that are permitted within the Civic Center, um, pretty evidently on this table. So just want to bring that up as this is the foundation that we're working from, um, and trying to implement.
Right, so, I guess, was that, uh, those designations were adopted as part of the ballot measure, is that right?
No, so the ballot measure is about, and Pamela correct me if I'm wrong, but it's height, it's parking garages. So it's, it's basically the, um, items related to ordinance twelve eighty-four that, um, needed to be modified for the TCP to be implemented.
Right, so, but so in that case, as we, I mean, the, the, it doesn't sound to me like there's anything stopping us from saying, as we finalize this zoning, that, you know, maybe that was a bad call.
Well, I, I kind of do want to take a step back that, um, the impetus of this zoning code update is to follow the existing general plan and TCP, um, where, um, the current Civic Center side has been designated, both in the general plan and also see, um, TCP as a civic use. So, um, if we do want to consider, which I'm not sure, I, I think it might, might not be a bad idea to entertain this other idea of moving the Civic Center around, that will be going beyond the scope of what we're doing today.
Yeah, and I, I would say to add to that, one of the upsides of being the public jurisdiction is that if there is a time, five years from now, ten years from now, when we decide to want to move our Civic Center campus, you can do, you could rezone the property or re-designate the general plan property at that time in order to take advantage of it.
Yeah.
I think in the, in the long run, keeping a single-story building in that location, see, I'm, it seems implausible relative to the rest of the TCP.
At first, um, to the chair, I'm sorry, um, at first, hearing what, hearing the, that idea, it seemed, it seemed like it would be pretty easy just to say, well, why not just make that entire area be El Camino Real and then the, the El Camino Zone and then include Civic Center as part of that designation? But then that also precludes moving it, because you could only move it somewhere else within that zone, then you would have to put Civic Center in all the zones, and now it's starting to get complicated. So I, I think maybe just leave it as it is and approach it later, uh, with a rezone if, if such a project, um, becomes feasible.
Uh, on that point, just to clarify, um, I, I presume from the conversation that we're having that it would not be, um, it, it wouldn't be too terribly difficult to revisit this at a time when, when there were more concrete steps to, to move the Civic Center. Uh, it sounds like that's, like, nothing that we do now is gonna really prevent that from being a possibility down the road.
That's right.
Correct.
That's my understanding.
Okay, all right. Does anybody else have any questions or things they'd like to share? Okay. All right, I think I'm done too, and if nobody else, um, has anything else, then I'll, I'll hand it back to Pamela and staff to finish it out.
Sorry, I had it unmuted. To the chair, when it's appropriate, I'd like to be able to ask some questions around definitions.
Oh, that's right, yes. Um, I think now would be a great time.
Okay. Okay, um, I don't know if these definitions are standard definitions taken from a particular state book or if there's, or they are specific to San Bruno, but, uh, I don't know that. And so, um, and maybe they need to be, some need to remain and stay this way, but these are just my thoughts around them. Um, and of course, I read them all and some fall into, to, um, one and the other. So I'll start with, on page one, um, and, and I really appreciate that they were alphabetical, made it really easy to navigate through them. There is one that's boarding care after bars and nightclubs, but halfway down the page, that isn't in there. It is under, it is under a different name. I believe it might be like maybe residential care, but residential care has a little bit of a different meaning. So either the meaning on the other side, meaning could be, uh, expanded or resident, or given its own category, I'm not quite sure, but I just.
Could you, um, so the first, uh, definition, or the, the use term, I suppose, the use classification that you're referring to is residential care facilities or?
Well, there isn't one, well, I'm, I'm going, let me just go down the list. Let me hold that for a second until I get to residential care. But we used to have applicants before us to upgrade, change, implement, and new applications for boarding care homes. I didn't reflect that. And so I was reading it when I got to other definitions. I'm wondering, are, could they be related? But, uh, they were applying as boarding care facilities at the time. So I'm just gonna go alphabetically down the list because it's a little hard to flip back and forth, if you can just bear with me around it. So maybe I put a, a parking spot for boarding care homes under the bars and nightclubs and maybe it, it relates to something else. Okay, on the, on the, um, second page, there are daycare facilities, there's daycare facilities, there's also home daycare, home daycare small, home daycare large. So, um, and they are, oh, you know, in this daycare center, that's basically that it's not residential. So I think I just need a little more clarification around that. So just alphabetically daycare center and then there's home daycare. Now, on home daycare, which would then be page three, there's the very first one that says home daycare, it's kind of an overview. And then it looks like there's another one, daycare large, and it looks like it's three separate units, when truly the top one is of large and small. And so I would like to also, if you can consider, um, the, at this, what says home daycare facility serve between one and fourteen children, it's a statement about the two below it. So either indent the other two or different clarification, but the first one, it's truly just a descriptive. Okay, so the other thing that I think is important, just because this has come up at the planning commission meetings, is there any opportunity, uh, to consider adding like adhere to Department of Social Care licensing regulations? And so that to me is a really important thing because there's a several confusing moments in the planning commission over the years, it's come up. And, um, that they have to be licensed because it's, because a bar department's going in there, the police department's going in there to the police department's going in there to clarify that's their license. But all family daycare, all daycare centers and family daycare homes are, need to be licensed. And they're not really called home daycare, they're called family daycares, family daycare, which is in the homes, resident, they have to be, the owners have to be in the residence, live in the residence according to the regulations. So we could certainly take this off topic for more clarification, but I wanted to, to bring that up.
I appreciate the feedback and you're right that that could be clarified by indenting the large and small home daycares as falling under the home daycare umbrella.
And I think that is also the case under the residential. Okay, so going down alphabetically to live slash work, does that include also, it talks about a space or a building or space uses jointly for office? Does that include equipment, supplies and other types of things? A building that is used jointly for office, light industrial, commercial use combined with residential use? To store a bobcat? Wanted to store lumber or wanted to store, is that, is that equipment and supplies? Is that considered light industrial?
I mean, that's more of like a warehousing use, Erin, feel free to chime in.
Okay.
I mean, usually it would be, warehousing would typically be within the light industrial category versus the industrial would be more you're using those bobcats to move gravel around. So yeah, storage is usually in that line, line industrial bucket. I don't recall offhand if we have that definition of light industrial and whether or not it includes that.
Okay, in that definition, it talks about light and light industrial or commercial use combined with a residential use. That's why I brought up the topic is because if it's residential and if you're living next to someone who actually stores neat and tidy equipment, it, it's still, does it have to be covered? Does it have to be, does it need to fit under an awning or? Okay, and so then the next one, lumber yards. It's not uncommon for a lumber yard to have an ancillary supplies and equipment, you know, hardware, household and commercial supplies, pipes, tubing for air conditioning, flooring. And so this basically only talks about wood and lumber. So I don't know if you want to include materials or revisit that for that. As I said, I'm not trying to come up with a solution, but just at least bring up the topic so that there'll be discussion.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, the definitions, an area used for the storage, distribution and sale of finished or rough cut lumber and lumber products. So I'm not sure if that could be interpreted to mean like kind of more ancillary, but we could clarify that.
Okay, okay. The following page. On office medical, I think this falls under, this is a simple one. I think like where it talks about examples, includes offices and clinics, that would be an urgent care, right?
Yes, an urgent care would be included.
Okay, and then the parking structures, it talks about use for the parking and storage of vehicles. Storage, because that mean, could that be long-term? Can someone park there for several days? Is this just for parking while you're in the commercial community? You know, just.
Yeah, we could also work on clarifying that. It may depend on the operator and their needs, but if we, if there was an interest in the planning commission and regulating a more, a longer term versus a shorter term parking lot, then it would be a good idea to clarify those two differences.
I think that's particularly important because of airport parking tax and different things that we have related to.
Yep, yep, exactly.
I don't think it's on the airport, long-term parking in our downtown.
Yep. And then in parks and recreation, it says it does not include health clubs, commercial amusement, recreational facilities, you know, with our new development at San Bruno Park. We are going to, there is going to be, maybe it's not a health club, but there is a gym there. I don't know that it's membership or plans to be membership, but, and then commercial, commercial amusement. I'm not quite sure what that means. You know, we have various, various clubs in our community that use that for commercial amusement. You know, there is the, the, in the park, the concerts in the park and different types of things. So when it says it does not include.
And I think the reason that it does not include, because many of those uses would fall under commercial recreation and entertainment.
Okay.
Located at the top of page six.
Okay, fair enough.
So just trying to kind of, I think, separate a more public recreational use from a gym, a health club, a bowling alley, something like that.
Sure, sure. Okay, on two, let's see. When I printed this, it ended up page number, sorry, I'm like E and F.
I apologize.
Okay, no worries. I, I could write it on there. So we're into the residential care. And so in there, the first one, basically it's a descriptive and then it's got residential care large, residential care small. And typically residential care is there, you know, asleep there. So it's very different than family daycare, that they don't sleep overnight. They take naps during the day, but they don't sleep overnight. So didn't believe that home daycare, family daycare would fall under residential care because it's a whole different type of licensing. And again, I would want to be sure that they follow regulations, Department of Social Service regulations. That's come up a lot over my 30 years. People were just basically confused because they felt that they were in compliance because the fire department, you know, they had the officials say, yes, it's, it's approved. But then they started getting parents in, licensing comes in and finds out that they don't have a license. So somewhere along the line, you know, Erin, we've probably had these discussions lots and lots of times. And I, I would like before my time and then my time on there that that piece gets on the map for it because it's, it can be confusing. And because I've been in the field for 45 years of family daycare and center-based care, I know this stuff. So I felt pretty confident about it. And it also in there, it should say licensed, you know, licensed residential facility, licensed residential. So adding that in there, because you, the city wouldn't want it to be unlicensed.
Very true.
And you're welcome to call me if you have any questions on this stuff.
I think in general, I think one thing we'll do when we bring back the draft is try to, not try, but we will align both our definitions and terminology with how the state uses their definitions and terminology to avoid any confusion.
Yeah, so on, from the, from the state agencies, it's title, title 22 is what we want. And there are some things for title five, but they follow almost the same regulations. License is the key word, that you're licensed and that you're regulated. Okay, and then heading down that same page to single-family home, it talks about a structure including manufactured housing units designed for occupancy by one family. You know, we all know that there are family members that share housing, that it's, it's cultural. You know, it's, it's not uncommon for that to be the case, so I just want to be sure we think about that. And so is that considered a one family that, you know, if you bring in grandma and grandpa to live there, is that considered a one family? And it could be. You know, so, but your neighbors will call you and say, there, there are three families living in there. And I see three cars that are, you know, I see the grandparents leave, I see the aunt and uncle, da, 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 so.
Yeah, that's a very good point and it can get very dicey when trying to define what is and what is not a family.
And I'm not opposed to how families decide to live with one another at all.
Yes, we'll, we'll look at some other definitions to determine a best practice and how to describe that.
And then, I don't know what supportive and transitional housing, you know, when I read this, I know what supportive housing is, but I couldn't quite, it didn't, it didn't speak to me as to what, didn't clarify to me what, if I read that, I'd have to stop and think with that. How does that apply to me if I'm applying for this? It says it provides a short-term or interim housing for individuals with mental health, addiction or other special social services and programs. As residential care facilities take in, typically it's adults with special needs of some sort, mental health issues or whatever it may be. And also there are some youth residential homes that, I didn't bring that up at the top on residential, that could be for youngsters or for adults or does it need to say one or the other? But the supportive transitional housing, how is that different? These are the topic and talks about transitional houses, orphanages, self-help group homes, you know, there could be some relationship in that piece of it or putting them both there or some thought in there. And I think I'm almost to the bottom of this. Okay, and then I think that's my last one coming up on. I think some of the others where they talked about triplex and duplex, there's also talking about one family living there. So most of them say one or more persons. So that, okay, then the last one that I have is towards the end, gasoline and vehicle service stations. It talks primarily about retail sale, dispensing of motor fuels, lubricants, definitions, you know, whatever. But there are sales of other types of materials. If you go on El Camino, we've got one particular very, very bold sale of mask and all the fun stuff that happens when there's a Super Bowl or, you know, World Series, they are selling little items there. And, and if you, if you want that to continue then, so, you know, that maybe it's a seasonal sale of some sort. Or not at all, I'm not quite sure, but I wanted to, not really just solely related, but they do sell other things that come up. I mean, our, the gas station at El Camino and Snee, it's become very creative. I don't know if you've seen the new dinosaur with them eating a, a human, a false human being. Not mentioning.
So perhaps a good edit would just be to broaden the definition of these incidental sales to.
Yeah, they're incidental of some sort. And I don't know if they're permitted or not, I have no idea, but, but they, they're very, they're very visible. So if we're going to allow them, at least include them in some method of. And I think that's it on the definitions.
Alright. Okay.
And feel free to call me if you have any questions on the, on any of the licensing kinds of things. I'm happy to help if it's useful to you.
Thank you.
Alright. So Kelly, did you get all the information that you needed from Mary-Lou Purnell on definitions?
Yeah, I was taking notes on the sheet while she was talking, so it's very helpful. I'm happy to find another.
Talk very, very fast.
Yes, they're very important.
Okay, thank you. Do, do any other commissioners have anything they'd like to add? Okay. Alright, in that case, we'll move from 4A on to item five, items from staff.
I need to ask for a favor to see if anyone is volunteering for the September Architectural Review Committee meeting. I don't have, I think I have one or two items scheduled, tentatively scheduled, but will definitely come through. So I see Commissioner Harmon and Commissioner Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And then item six is our second public comment. And this is the opportunity for any members of the public to raise their hand and on anything that was not on the agenda. Do we have, Madeline, anybody raising their hand to participate?
We do not have any speakers.
Okay, so then we'll move to adjournment. The next planning commission meeting will be held on September 15th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. And again, it's yet to.
Were there comments from participants or was that it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We need to start, are we agendizing that now?
I thought I saw it on the agenda, I'm scrolling.
Oh, maybe, you know what, maybe I didn't make my notes quite right. I probably didn't do my notes right. Yeah.
After the second public comment is items from members and subcommittee reports, number seven.
Okay, sorry, my, my mistake.
It's a new addition. Well, it's an added addition, I guess.
Oh, good, thank you. I'm sorry. And I'm not clever enough to, to make my screen do multiple things. Is, is there any, are there any reports or topics of discussion?
Have a question. So I, absolutely understandable because of everything that's happened this year. But at the beginning of the year, we, we had a aborted presentation of code enforcement. I know code enforcement has now moved from planning under police and all that. And then of course with COVID, everything gets different. But I'd just like to make sure that that's still kind of in the pipeline to happen at some point because I think it would be really helpful.
I will follow up and report back.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay, thanks, thanks for catching that one. Alright, so here we go, adjournment. Oh, the next commission meeting will be held on September 15th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Check the website to see whether it will be Zoom or it will be in person. I presume it'll probably be on Zoom, but you never know. And the time is 8:48 PM and we are now adjourned. Good night.
Good night.